Board trustees to order. I welcome everyone and wish you a happy new year. We're looking forward to a great year full of tremendous progress ahead. We've made a great deal of progress, but we're looking forward to even bigger and better things in the year ahead. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. President Vicki Karlech. She has a group, a special group from Wallace hands for the interviews.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Thank you for welcoming the Wallace State Community College Leadership Academy to you today. This is our 12th year of implementing our efforts to develop leadership at all levels of the organization. They'll spend a year in leadership development activities and at the conclusion of this year, they break up into groups. They've looked at the college both in systems, processes, and in our environments, and they propose projects for consideration by cabinet to change and improve our campus. And over all of the 12 years, I can only think of one project so far that has not been funded or implemented, and we've had significant improvements throughout the college because of the leadership that these folks demonstrate. Thank you for welcoming here this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Karlech. I now recognize Dr. Radell, President of Orem D. Wallace Community College to give our indication.
We are beginning a new year full of opportunities and challenges, a year with 365 days, 365 chances to make it a day that has made someone's life better. We may also have days that bring setbacks. On those days, remember the words of Ralph Waldo Emerson. Write it on your heart that every day is the best day in the year. He is rich who owns the day, and no one owns the day who allows it to be invaded with fret and anxiety. Finish every day and be done with it. You have done what you could. Some blunders and absurdities, no doubt, crept in. Forget them as soon as you can. Tomorrow is a new day. Begin it well and serenely, with too high a spirit to be cumbered with your old nonsense. This new day is too dear, with its hopes and invitations to waste a moment in the yesterdays. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy, for the opportunity to serve and make a positive difference every day, for the assistance of so many talented and dedicated coworkers, and for all of our students, every one of whom came to us to become better prepared for life and work and to pursue a dream. Grant us wisdom to know the right things to do and the strength to do them. Preserve the health of our leaders in the system and our colleges, as well as all employees and our students. Bless the system, our colleges, and all those whose lives are touched by our work. Help us to be effective for good in all that we do. For it is written in your holy scripture, "Let us not be weary in well-doing, for in due season we shall reap if we faint not." In full acknowledgement of your presence with us and the power and glory of your Son, who works through us and in us, amen.
Item 7, Secretary Rick Carlisle. One's hard. We need to do the prayers. Please forgive me. Please stand.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President?
President.
President?
President.
President? Next item on the agenda is the approval of today's agenda. All board members have received this in advance and have a chance to look at it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, with a motion by Mr. Davis, third second, and a second by Mr. Pan Troy. Any discussion, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving today's agendas submitted, please signify by raising your hand. Is there anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Item 5 is approval of the minutes of the December 12, 2018 meeting. Once again, the board members received this well in advance of today's meeting and have a chance to review it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pan Troy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion, any changes to members' minutes of the December 12 meeting? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the December 12, 2018 meeting, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? And is her approved? Section 6, public comment. No one signed up for public comment. Section 7, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, physical, information technology, and workforce development. Item 7A1 is implementation of special building fee at Southern Union State Community College. This item is, the rest of these were on our work session agenda last month. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the implementation of the special building fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll do to vote. All those in favor of approving the implementation of a special building fee at Southern Union State Community College, signify by raising your hand. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A2 is a tuition rate adjustment for the Alabama Community College system. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Wood. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the tuition rate adjustment for the Alabama Community College system, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A3 is the purchase of property for North West Shels Community College. Building to support the medical program there. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the recommended purchase of property for North West Shels Community College, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section 8, executive legal and public information. First three of these are policy revisions, which were on our work session last month. Mr. Pan Troy, these all have the approval of the policy. Item 8A1 is a recommendation regarding adoption to revise policy 101.01. The governor's responsibility to board trustees. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second? Second by Ms. Boy. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the revision of policy 101.01, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A2, policy 101.02. It's a little wordy change of the composition of important internal office and board trustees. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the revision of policy 101.02, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A3, revision of policy 500.01, use of college facilities. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the recommended revision of policy 500.01, use of college facilities, please raise your hand. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A4, purchase of property at Bishop State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the purchase of properties at Bishop State Community College, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A5 is a recommended operation agreement for the campus cafeteria at Lawson State Community College. I'll entertain a motion in this. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Pan Troy. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to commend the Lawson State Board for the effort to pursue this, the savings that have become evident from it are significant, and I always appreciate that fiscal responsibility.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to call the question. All those in favor of approving the recommended operation agreement for the campus cafeteria at Lawson State Community College, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section 9, personnel.
We have some new colleagues in our team of this.
Good morning. I'm Charlene Pinkenstein with the Human Resources Department, and I'd like to introduce our five newest additions to the staff. Ms. Courtney Taylor, would you stand up, please? Courtney is our new Regional Director of Workforce and Economic Development. She has over 10 years of experience in workforce in both Troy University and Calhoun Community College, where she served as Director of Workforce Solutions. Courtney has a bachelor's degree in business administration from the University of West Alabama, and a master's degree in human resources management from Troy University. Welcome, Courtney. Brian Harrison. Brian is our new Associate Director of Financial Services and System Support. Brian is a CPA and has over 21 years of experience in the accounting field. He served for two years as Vice President for Business and Financial Affairs at Marion Military Institute. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Commerce and Business Administration and a Master of Tax Accounting from the University of Alabama. Thank you, Brian. Kristy Sparks. Kristy is our new Webmaster. She has over 10 years of experience in the web development and graphic design field. She worked as a web developer for Hatton Brown Publishers, as well as several magazines. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Computer Science from Troy University. Thank you, Kristy. Ebony Davis. Ebony joined us recently as the new Communication Specialist. Ebony spent seven years as a reporter for the Dothan Eagle, and most recently worked at Enterprise State Community College as Administrative Assistant to the Dean of Students. Ebony has a Bachelor's Degree in English from Stillman College and a Master's Degree in Publishing from the University of Houston, and she very recently completed a second Master's Degree in Communication from Troy University. So, welcome, Ebony. And finally, Mohammed Obadah. Mohammed is our new Executive Director of Reporting and Enterprise Application Support in the IT Department. He has more than 25 years of IT experience, 10 of which was in higher education. Mohammed has worked for the last six years with Alution as Executive Director and Applications Director. His qualifications are too numerous to list, but he served for seven years as Director of Information Systems at Jackson State University and five years as a programmer analyst in Ahman Jordan. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Computer Science from Yarmouth University in Jordan, and a Master's in Computer Science from Jackson State University, and currently is working on a doctoral degree. So, welcome, Mohammed. Thank you very much for your time.
On behalf of the board, welcome everyone. We're so glad you've come a part of the great team that the Chancellor has assembled and look forward to working with. If not, we have a report from Personnel Committee, and now I'll recognize Chairman Milton Davis.
Thank you. I'm going to read our reports. Commencing in October 2018, the Personnel Committee, consisting of Milton Davis, Susan Boy, and Blake McAnally, initiated Chancellor Baker's performance review and accordance to Section 6 of the Chancellor's employment agreement, which requires an annual review to be completed by December 31st of each calendar year. We utilize the Alabama Community College System's customary evaluation process, which provides each member of the board trustees the opportunity to objectively evaluate and have input into the Chancellor's performance review with respect to the following metrics. First, the Chancellor's embracement, promotion, and advancement of the vision and mission of the Alabama Community College System. Second, the Chancellor's efforts to secure the necessary capital, legislative appropriations, and other resources for the proper management and operation of the Alabama Community College System. Third, the Chancellor's leadership and direction in building a culture of integrity and excellence throughout the Alabama Community College System. Four, the Chancellor's financial efficiency in managing the budget and appropriate funds in a manner to be a good steward of the state and Alabama Community College System resources. And fifth, the Chancellor's efforts and intentions to work cooperatively with the board to develop and implement a fiscally responsible plan for the Alabama Community College System. And I'm proud to report the board's collective evaluation was exceptional. Last year, the board made long overdue adjustments to salary schedules for our system presidents and staff. Based on the Chancellor's exceptional performance and the board's confidence in him, the Personnel Committee is recommending a salary increase to the annual amount of $333,000, effective as of January 14. We also plan to recommend a two-year contract extension, which will require a contract amendment, and we will have that ready for approval at our March 2019 board meeting. This extension will effectively extend Chancellor Baker's contract to March 31st, 2022. And at this time, I would like to make a motion for the board to approve the salary increase to the annual amount of $333,000 for the Chancellor, effective as of January 14, 2019.
Then a motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Discussion, comments from the board?
I'd say I appreciate Chancellor's hard work and the important work that he's been in, and just really appreciate all that he's done. I think we're on the right track.
Well, Ms. Brown, I think that's the summary of the whole board. Chancellor, thank you so much for your diligence and your leadership. Thank you, Milton, and thank you to all the members of the Personnel Committee for the work that y'all have done in assembling all the evaluations and for going through that and for coming up with this outstanding recommendation. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. There's been a motion made that the Chancellor's new annual compensation being $333,000 from the Personnel Committee, motion been seconded. At this time, we'll move to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And we look forward to at the March meeting having the rest of the committee's work done so we can take action on that in regard to the board. And seeing none, we have some personnel now. It's time for the Chancellor's.
Chancellor, you're in good shape. I've asked IT, then if you will, come forward and let's give a brief update on where we are with the implementation of ERP system. I'm there with our president this morning early. Our presidents and their staffs across the board have stepped up to the plate, have been very supportive in an environment that is demanding a lot of their time, attention, and effort. And it's a bold move, but it's a move that will pay dividends in my opinion.
So, Karen, are you on first?
I think I am. I think I'm on first. Thank you very much for giving us some time today. I'm Karen Becker, for those that I have not met before. I have a few slides that I want to show you. I just want to give you a brief update on how our project is progressing. This is a slide that you may have seen before. This is an overall timeline of where we are going to progress. Reminder, Cohort 1 is our nine banner schools. Cohort 2 are our 15 non-banner schools that we'll be moving forward in 2020. So, just a reminder of what those two groups represent. I want to give you some recent accomplishments on how we've been progressing, and I'm going to reiterate what Chancellor Baker just said. Thank you to all of you in the audience, especially the presidents from all the schools. If we could not have gotten this far without all the cooperation and support from everyone at the institutions, so greatly appreciate that. There's been lots and lots of work that has been done in the past few months, from October to December. You can read a lot of it for yourselves. We've had some significant kickoffs for each of the functional areas for student finance, financial aid, and HR. We've also started work on moving the data from their environments after schools into one ACCS environment. So, that's some of the data migration that we're talking about in the past few months. We also started planning our degree works audit implementation. There's been lots and lots of work going on. Some of the things that are upcoming in the next few months, again, more data migration. And again, I'm going to reiterate what I said, lots and lots of work is happening at our institutions. We are asking for them to do a lot of work on top of their normal day-to-day jobs. So, thank you again for that. We are requiring and asking them to look at the data as we move it from one environment to the other to make sure that we're moving the data safely and securely and accurately. That takes time for each one of the institutions to review their data and make sure that it comes across as it should. We also have warm, significant teams for each of the functional areas that are meeting, some weekly, some every other week, and they are developing structure policies, procedures, and making sure that we unify our coding structure as we move forward. Later in the year, as you can see, we're going to be planning our go-live activities and doing lots of training, both on-site and remotely. So, there's lots and lots of activity between now and the summer for Cohort 1. Cohort 2, as you see at the very bottom of the slide, will be engaged in all of this as well. Their work is important to be engaged in because the things that we are doing and the decisions we're making now will impact how they use the system when they go live in 2020. The final slide that I have for you is just an overall review of where we stand on the budget. I will point out just a couple of points. We have, to this point, used 12% of the budget allocated for the project, but if you look up at the middle section where it says 17%, we've already gone 17% into our project as far as the time. So, just those two numbers show you we're doing very well. I know one of the concerns that I've heard before, are we progressing? Are we doing what we should be doing to get this project done? There are some numbers to show you that we are progressing as we should under budget. I'm going to reiterate one more time because I don't think it can be said enough. This system offices work very, very hard to get to this point, but we could not do it without the schools. And I want to recognize that there are lots of people that are doing multiple things at the same time. We're asking them to do things in a very short timeframe so that we can meet these deadlines. So, I don't know how else to reiterate, thank you very much for spending the extra time and effort. I know it's stressful. We hear that. We hear the stress, and we also appreciate it, and we're here to support you as well. Yes, if you have questions, obviously, Ben and I will be here after the meeting.
Any questions? I'll also recommend your progress, you know, in projects which actually earn value based on where you are progress-wise to budget, and your two times where you should be.
It's lots of work and lots of hours, but not just people in this room, but at all our institutions.
Did that one question?
Yes, sir.
Along that same line, can you give us an overall picture of the workload? Is it fairly linear as you go through this, or are the time and expenses?
Right now, we're ramping up, and we will be very heavy, starting, matter of fact, next week, we will be very, very heavy. So, those of you at the schools, go back and be ready. There will be lots and lots of things going on at your institutions that will require some time to be taken away from their daily jobs, and all the way through the summer.
We expect the same from Alution. Their contract efforts are expensive. Are they going to follow that ramping up, or are they going to be?
Yes, and one of those slides shows that FTAs, the full-time consultants that we have here, they are on with us through that period.
Through the coverage, do you know a start of sales?
Absolutely.
Let me, if I can, short-term, maybe explain the benefits. Because this is a tremendous night for a guy, talking about Alution, and I did. I walked into the meeting room yesterday, I think they had, what were they, eight or 10 staff members from Alution, they are working. And I do that for a lady. But where all of this is going is to a point of developing a data system that is reliable and manageable and consistent. And we're taking steps internally to change how we listen to things, to cause them. We're creating a unit headed up to keep in the room. Nikki is headed up the room, but it's devoted to basically mining the data, doing research and looking at what we are doing and not doing, and working with the schools to make sure that we're utilizing the data on a data program. And honestly, this is something that could not have been done in this department in my defense, to be honest with you. We've built a staff in IT that I would say is second to none in the community that we serve. We've built a staff in finance that is up to speed with where they should be. But all of that goes to making this environment, the kind of environment that can support the schools at a level that we need to be supporting the students. And if they aren't doing some of the things they need to do, and it should be doing, then we want to be able to do those things. In addition to that, I have failed after a long time to simply, you know, answer. In addition to that, I have to lay off after a long time Cynthia, yeah, Anthony. Cynthia is heading up the unit on student services. We are determined that the Community College System and this office is going to be focused on the student experience. Is it the right kind of experience at the time they think about coming to a student? Or make contact, and do they get the kinds of services they need and the kind of education offering? And Cynthia is heading up the organization to make sure that occurs. In addition to that, Tony, didn't I say Tony, all of earlier, Tony, as you know, has been headed up the teaching and learning function. But we're expanding that, including more staff people in it, to make sure that when a student is in a classroom, that what should be happening in that classroom is happening and that we have followed through to make sure of it. So we are going more and more focused on the student part of the Community College System. You say what we should be, but we think that we always are. But unfortunately, sometimes we have a follow-through process. And I just want it to be so effective that we lead this state in making the changes in the communities that should be made to provide the services that can be beneficial to the community. We are a community college system, and our job is to help build that community regardless of what the needs is. We're geared towards that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chancellor. We have the date, location. We'll, after adjournment, we'll recess for about fifteen minutes. And if everybody, all the board members, will stick close, we'll start the work session in a timely manner at ten forty-five. Here in this room, our next meeting is February thirteenth, ten a.m. in this room. Any comments from the Board?
Over many years, I've served in one form, the Deputy Secretary of the National Director. I've had the privilege of working with a lot of board members, the National Director, I served seventeen years. So I've had a lot of different experiences. What makes all of this work is having a board of trustees who is totally, totally committed to the proposition that it's our job to improve education in state level. It hasn't been about one or the other. It hasn't been about special interests. It's been about them. And it has been a superb pleasure to work with a group of people who are totally committed to that mission and put aside their personal figures around this and talk about what is it we really need to do to be successful. That's what I, working in a community college system, does. And I just want to make you know how much I appreciate you and the job that you do. And to make it kind of easy for the rest of us to do the job, because we don't have any excuses. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate the job that you does for the community.
Thank you for the kind words, Chancellor. We appreciate you, your senior leadership team, everyone that works here in the central office, especially our presidents and their staff and their faculty that do all that work at all, but many, many sides throughout the state. But thank you for your vote of confidence and appreciate the encouragement. Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion to second. All those in favor to say, I stand in your.